Cost of living has difference in everything.
Yes, sir. All right, folks. Folks, I now call to order the board to meet, this meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Pluvana County will begin with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Do we have an adoption of the agenda? Do I have a second? Motion is made by Mr. Weber, second by Mr. Booker. All in favor? Do I have to go by one by one for it? Okay, I didn't know if I did because we got so many people on line. Okay, those opposed, Chair votes aye, motion passes four zero with Mr. O'Brian. Mr. Dahl, county administrator, report, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, got a few things to report today. Got some things, uh, some things starting to ramp up a little bit here in the county, some events. So first of all, I want to just, we have some new employees starting. Wendy Edwards is communications officer, started E nine one one. She started March twenty nine. Jasmine Hankin, also communication officer in E nine one one, also started March twenty nine. Ellen Mayow, may, yeah, mayow, part-time library clerk, started April fifth. Stephanie Mayhew, a deputy treasurer in the treasurer's office, started April fifth. Then we also have Jessica Melton, a human services assistant for social services, started April fifth, and Rachel Lynn, a human services assistant for social services, started April fifth as well. That's a new employee starting, and so we're trying, you know, Miss Snow's been sending these emails out with the pictures to all staff, so we kind of see who started, and let's kind of get the board updates on new employees as well. Kind of partnership with the FSPCA and the Pluvana County Sheriff's Office, there's a drive-through rabies clinic that's going to be Saturday, April twenty fourth. It's going to be from nine AM to twelve PM at the Pluvana County High School. They're asking for a ten dollar cash only donation to the FSPCA. They're asking for people that want to get their animals' rabies shots to pre-register. You can either pick up a form at the FSPCA, the sheriff's office also will have them, or you can go to, to the fspc.org website, and you can fill out a form there. So again, that'll be Saturday, April twenty fourth. In addition, on Saturday, April twenty fourth, over at Pleasant Grove Park, we're going to be having the, kind of the, the Pluvana County Tire Drop Off and Hazardous Waste Collection. So again, that's going to be Saturday, April twenty fourth. It's going to be from two, I'm sorry, from ten to two PM. So this year, what we have, the tire drop-off section, and let me just kind of show you the math here. You know, just kind of a little flow from ten to twelve PM, people can drop off tires right here up towards the front, and then those that want to continue on to go and drop off hazardous waste would then go to the back, and then they would loop on out, and then we'll have some overflow parking right there. So tire drop-off, ten to twelve PM, hazardous, hazardous waste is from ten to two PM. Like I said, when trucks are full, we're going to close. Again, no commercial vehicles, no moving trucks, no trailers, no must-show proof of county residency. No electronics, no asbestos, like I said, trying to make sure that we get as many people to drop off stuff as, as we can. So again, that'll be Saturday, April twenty fourth, at Pleasant Grove Park. Also, we just had, for Parks and Rec, had their Easter, Easter event at Pleasant Grove Parks, and the event was held April third, twenty twenty one. Again, to try and keep some of the, trying to keep some of the traditions that we have in Pluvana County live, you know, with COVID, we, Parks and Rec changed things up a little bit. Instead of having, you know, hundreds of kids intermingled just running about, we kind of, Parks and Rec broke it up into some smaller fields, separated fields, kind of broke it up by age groups. So at nine AM, they had thirty-one to three-year-olds and twenty-one, four-to-six-year-olds. At ten-thirty, they had seventeen-four-to-six-year-olds and nineteen-seven-to-nine-year-olds. And then at noon, they had seven, seven-to-nine-year-olds and thirteen-ten-to-twelve-year-olds. So again, total, they, Parks and Rec wanted folks to register, so we made sure we had enough space, and we were keeping it in, in kind of, in coordination with my state was pushing for restrictions on space. And so there was a hundred and seven children that registered, and special thanks to the interact club members from Pluvana County High School that volunteered to help out with that. Also, if you've seen, so the county did have a controlled burn, prescribed burn, as what forestry calls it, over at Pleasant Grove Park, that occurred on April fifth, which was Monday. Oh, sorry, Monday, Monday, yeah, Monday, April fifth. So looking at the field, the shot right here, this is Field A, this is kind of in between the high school and the Pleasant Grove House, and then over here has got another field behind the soccer field. So they did about a third of the front field right here, and then they did the complete burn in Field B there. They had to stop kind of doing some of this out front here, just due to some of the humidity levels. Each metal burn took about ninety minutes. We're hoping that tomorrow they are going to be able to finish the burn here, but, but apparently with the direction of some of the winds, they're not going to be able to do that because they would be blowing right towards the high school. So with Parks and Rec starting to ramp up some of their, you know, sporting events and stuff, the field, we may have to postpone the rest of that until the fall. But again, here are just some pictures of, of the, of the prescribed burn. You can see right here, they had a lot of the VDOT, I'm sorry, the Virginia Department of Forestry, folks out there setting the fires, they already had some of the fire lines, but the dozers that they built. And again, this is just to kind of rejuvenate the, the meadow habitat that's there. And then here's kind of a, a good aerial shot. This was a shot that was taken in the eighth, in, in, sorry, over the winter. This wasn't burned, although it looks very brown. And then this shot right here is, is that one-third of Field A that was burned, which is basically right in this area, right there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, right down here. So this area was right down there. So again, like I said, you know, we got a good portion of it done, you know, this recently, and then we'll have to work again to get some more of it done in the fall time. Just some announcements. So Route fifty-six, Brimmo, Brimmo Road Bridges, construction began on April fifth. We've been trying to put information out through different sources, I know VDOT's put stuff out. So the road will be closed to construction for the duration, and it's expected to last through September. Once, once construction is complete, bridges will be able to carry, you know, all legal loads throughout the roadway, and they're actually doing two bridge projects, and they're running them consecutively so they can minimize the closure of that area as much as possible to do them both. And message boards will remain instructing drivers of alternate routes and detours. So, Mr. Rothman and myself, we had a meeting with VDOT, so it was last, last week.
Firefly.
I'm sorry. Firefly and Dominion, we had a meeting with them last week regarding expanding fiber into the Dominion territory. So one, one thing to talk about is, is Firefly's existing project, or CBSI, their existing project with the county where they're trying to get all their existing customers on. There's, they're still on target to hopefully have that project done by twenty twenty-two. So that'll cover about eighty to eighty-five percent of the county that they will have access to Firefly broadband. Again, really what we're talking about, again, you know, C-Vac covers about all this area, with the exception of some of these red areas here, these are Dominion territories. So really what we're doing, Dominion would own the middle mile, Firefly would own the last mile, and Firefly, with, with this kind of new program, Firefly would only expand into Dominions, into Dominion areas that are underserved. The underserved is categorized, it's less than twenty-five-three. So again, as what we've noticed is, the areas in red are what are considered underserved areas. And so, so really, you know, Dominion's looking to get fiber, Firefly wants to expand the network that, that they have going on. So what they're asking, they're asking for counties to, to consider an MOU memorandum of understanding that would allow them to start to study that area, that area in red, to determine what a project would look like in the county between Dominion, Firefly, and Pluvana County. They're not projecting to be any cost to this, you know, they're looking, there may be some staff assistance. But so really, the steps and timeline is, one is Phase One, which the county decided MOU operating the project development study. So all that does is just look at the area and tell us what type of project they would do. Phase Two would then, Firefly and Dominion can conduct the, the project development study during that. They'll identify eligible areas, preliminary design, budget. Firefly will then present the county project costs and potential funding sources to do that, and then if the county wants to move forward at some, at some level at that point, then we could do so. After that, Dominion files with the SEC for approval, and, and construction could begin in twenty twenty-two for that project if, if we move forward. So just kind of looking for some head nods, and we don't have anything formal on this as far as the memorandum of understanding, but what we would do is if the board is interested in, in having Firefly and Dominion do a project development study, and I, and again, they're looking for all counties to do this, from, you know, Louisa County, Orange County, actually, I don't think Orange County's interested, but some other counties, Cumberland and, and what have you, that have a presence with Dominion and Firefly. They're trying to kind of do this from a regional approach, but again, does the board have any interest in moving forward with the memorandum of understanding?
What, real quick, we don't go back to the one where you had the red, green, right there?
Yep.
My guess is that showing the green is already connected, the blue is what yet to come, and then the red is what the Dominion area.
Correct. Yep, yep. So, so, so the green, the green and the blue is kind of the C-Vac territory.
The blue has not been hooked up.
Correct.
That's what we're waiting to get hooked up.
Yeah. The, the blue is the area that they're talking, that they, that they're expecting to have completed by twenty twenty-two, Mr. Rothman. So, so the blue is actually the reconnect grant that they received from the federal government. So green is what they're doing with the original project, blue is that twenty-five-nine-dollar grant that they received last year. The white blue is the cares project that will be in the wishbone in the middle.
Yeah, right.
And then red is projected underserved areas. So as you can see, you know, there's that portion that's, that has no color, that's a portion of white part of yellow that's Dominion. We know that has service, that's not underserved, because we know there's service there. So part of the project development study will be to finalize where are underserved areas? Because underserved areas will be eligible for grants and other opportunities, and that's really what they're trying to do. If you have service, it's great, you have service available, we're trying to get to the areas that do not have service.
Green in the middle of, of fourteen, that is simply common.
Probably, yeah.
So they, they do, they have to hit that underserved, that, that twenty-five-three, they're not always hitting twenty-five-three. Well, part of the study will be to, to not, not double, yeah, there's no point in expanding to an area that has service.
Making sure that we get everyone covered first.
Right. Well, and, and, and they also want to make sure, because just because, let's just say CenturyLink is in an area, say right now, they have fiber going to the node, and you know, right there, say you get twenty-five-three, but if you live a mile down the road, you're not necessarily getting that type of service. So there's going to be some, there's going to be some spannassing of, of kind of how some of this works. So that's, those are some of the things in some of the project study, too, that with Dominion, Firefly, staff, and, and other resources, we're going to try and determine who's underserved and who's touched. The study will have a tremendous outreach.
Yeah.
So people can tell us, these are my speaks. And again, we're not adding.
We're just looking for head nod.
Yeah, Dominion and Firefly, there's no cost to this.
Does anyone have a problem with this? I don't think so.
Till we bring it on to the, onto the next, next meeting, and so with that being said, we've got a meeting next week where we have a very light agenda. So if the board wanted, we could put this on next week's meeting if we want, since we have a special meeting.
I don't think, since that this is not going to cost us anything, and us getting broadband to our community as fast as we can, I don't think anybody will have a problem with putting it on there.
I'll, we'll add this to the next meeting, and then, then with that, and again, fantastic, Tractor Supply is now officially open. They have their soft opening, I think it was the last week in March, but they have their kind of brand opening April first through April fourth. Here, they had a, a kind of a real low-key ribbon cutting ceremony on this past Saturday. And then again, Tractor Supply is located at fourteen-eighteen South Fossil Road, Palmyra, Virginia. They're open from eight to nine every day. Like I said, you know, we're looking, looking forward to that, having a, being a good business partner and kind of expanding upon the great businesses that we already have, and I've already been in there and contributing some tax dollars and things, so. And then, and then just some next meetings here. So April fourteenth, again, next week, we have a special meeting, and it's the public hearings for the FY twenty-two budget and for the calendar year twenty-one tax rate, since we had a reassessment, and it's just the public hearings. And, and, and again, as I said, since those are really the only two topics we have, I may, and I may try to add just a few smaller items to that agenda, so if we're all coming here for a meeting, we can maybe get a few things done, nothing overwhelmed though, for sure. And then April twenty-first, we have a seven PM regular meeting, and that's when the board adopts the fiscal year twenty-two budget and the calendar year twenty-one tax rates. And then April twenty-eighth, we just have this as a, as a to-be-determined, if the board approves a budget April twenty-first, we don't need the April twenty-eighth meeting. So again, to discuss budget, we have some time this evening, we can discuss budget, we have some time next week, we can discuss budget, and then assume board wants to discuss budget, and then we have a little time prior to adopting the budget. That's all I have for the board, any questions?
Thank you very much, sir. All righty, I'm now open the first round of public comment. Anyone wish to address the board, please step their microphone, state your name and address. Keep your comments. Okay, well, let me finish my little. Comments, five minutes on topic and directed to the board, does anyone wish to speak at this time? Ms. Eager, you asked?
Ms. Chairman, my name is John Gilbody. I raised my hand on, with the, the app, and.
You'll be next, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to catch you as a citizen. I appreciate your love and attention. On Sunday, April fourth, Easter, I got to witness the incredible skill and training of our fire and rescue volunteers, and their response was amazing. We had a chimney fire about nine thirty that evening. That they were at my house. They assessed the situation, went to work, they had to get access to the chimney. So my home is an old house, well, we had a farmhouse with a super-level roof. The ladder truck was being repaired and not available, so they set four or five ladders together in a certain prayerless situation. I have seen the ladder truck, and I wondered why the school didn't need. Well, that's my question. Yeah, well, obviously, now I know, we need a ladder truck. What I didn't know was that this house was once heated by only woodstoves and fireplaces in every room. This bedroom was built in woodshed, and behind the woodshed had been wood stove. I had my question. And then it was converted to something, the stove, I was covered with a tin plate, and secure with a frame. Fire crew measured the extreme heat, and they discovered this. And they not found that it's true of the problem, it's very possible. I want to thank this two volunteers, the fire rescue department chiefs, for their service and responding so quickly. I want this to show you what they discovered. I don't know how to do it, but it had a heat medico. Learned a lot about the fire department. This was what was. Fully fire back.
And we have those in our church, and I'm glad to know that because it can be dangerous.
Well, this was staged because it was behind the woodwork.
Right.
Built in. They didn't close up.
Yes.
The chimney. I just wanted to thank the fire department, and I'd like to thank the volunteers. Real mighty, so you can save my home. I'd like to thank twenty-two volunteers who showed up. And I would first say thank you to Jeff Potter. F. Potter. Chief Dwayne Dale. Jonathan Kenny. Jonathan Kenny came up and introduced himself.
Yeah.
He was twenty years old.
Yeah.
Was home from, uh, women married for Easter. He got the call and came from my home. Jean Campbell. Richie Constance Kino. That's long, that's. Joshua Brent. K. L. Estes. John Delmooney. Dave Bass. Brian Paul. Russell Billings. Gregory Edwards. Harry Morris. Daniel Morgan. Jason Powell. Ethan Weaver. Matthew Hubert. Andrew Ray. Mike Brent. Christopher Beverly. Brian Morris. Jason, and a two. And thank you.
Oh, okay. The gentleman that spoke up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, my name is John Gilbody, and I'm an attorney, and I represent the interests of Quigley Properties LLC. As the board may or may not know, Quigley Properties is attempting to develop a, a small subdivision in the Columbia District. It was originally going to be forty-seven lots, but after the developer had some discussions with some of the neighbors, that was then reduced by over half to actually just simply twenty lots. And the matter is referred to by community development staff as S U B twenty dash thirty-three. Now, the planning commission first heard this matter in its January twelfth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Unfortunately, and frankly, in violation of Virginia law, S U B twenty thirty-three was considered by the, by the commission as part of a public hearing. And at that time, the planning commission then deferred acting on S U B twenty thirty-three until the March meeting. Now, prior to the March meeting is when Quigley submitted an amended sketch plan, and that had the, the, the smaller development that I talked about before, but going from forty-seven to twenty units. And I think very importantly, community development staff then prepared a report that did not cite any deficiencies whatsoever with the sketch plan. Now, pursuant to Virginia law, specifically Virginia Code fifteen point two dash twenty-two eighty-six point one, that should have been the analysis, the end of the analysis. The sketch plan should have been approved because that's what the statute requires. The planning commission unfortunately then again deferred S U B twenty thirty-three at the March hearing, or at the March meeting, I should say, and, and it's going to be considered again at the April meeting. I was present at the March meeting, and I asked the basis for the deferral, and I was not given an answer. I was, it was counsel suggested that I call and, and ask and discuss that privately, and I did, and frankly, that was not a discussion that was helpful, nor did I get an answer to my question, in my view, although the veracity of my statements were questioned by counsel, and I was frankly taken quite a bit aback by that. In any case, on March nineteenth, I prepared and sent a letter to Douglas Miles noting that Quigley Properties appeals the decision of Mr. Miles to not approve the sketch plan dubbed S U B twenty dash thirty-three. And this letter was sent, as I've indicated, as I indicated in the letter pursuant to Pluvana Code, County, Pluvana County Code Section nineteen dash nine dash three. And according to Pluvana County Code Section nineteen dash nine dash four, this body, meaning the Board of Supervisors of Pluvana County, shall hear such appeal within sixty days of such filing. So I ask on behalf of my client that I be heard, and I have an opportunity to present my client's case to this board at the May fifth hearing. And I asked that I be given at least twenty minutes to explain the facts and the law relative to this development and the laws surrounding a cluster development in, which is what my client is trying to do, and trying to develop. Virginia Code fifteen point two twenty-two eighty-six point one is very clear that cluster subs, cluster subdivisions are to be approved administratively by staff. And in this case, and unfortunately, S U B twenty thirty-three was considered as part of a public hearing, which was violative of Virginia's state law. And likewise, it's clear that a locality is barred from requiring a developer from obtaining a special use permit to gain approval of a sub, of a cluster subdivision, but that's what the community development plan or community development staff did and requested in their staff report for the January meeting. So that's where we are, and the, I mean, let's be clear, there was, there was no deficiency cited in the March community staff report. And now I've reviewed the meeting minutes for the planning commission for the past few years, and indeed, I've looked at some of the audio recordings, I asked for some of those pursuant to FOIA so that I could actually listen to them. And it's very clear to me that the planning commission is aware of Virginia Code fifteen point two twenty-two eighty-six point one. They've been advised that the statute does not give the commission latitude when reviewing a plan for a cluster subdivision, but notwithstanding that, they acted in a manner that I believe is violative of, of that statute for reasons that I'm at a loss to understand. Now, what we're asking, what I'm asking on behalf of my client is simply to be heard at the May fifth hearing, and to have, to have my client's case and appeal set on the agenda for that day. And I'm happy to talk to Ms. Caitlin Solis, who I understand to be the clerk of the, of your board, to be, to, to set that at, that up, if at all possible. Of your board to be to to set that at that up if at all possible. And with all that said, I'm also happy to ask, answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Put your five minutes up, appreciate it. We will get staff will get in touch.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Sarah. Hearing none, I will now end the first round of public comment. We have no public hearing, so we move forward with our action matters A, community service award resolution. Sean O'Neil Collins Senior, Mr. Dahl.
And Mr. Chair, I'm actually going to have Mrs. Booker, she asked if she could read this, she's been on the C P M team, Mr. Collins was as well, and I think it's just appropriate if she would. So I have the 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 resolution upon the upon the stream here for those and then Mrs. Booker will read this.
Okay, I would like for Brian to stand, he is the Children's Service Act Coordinator for the county and Kim May. This resolution was put together by the community planning management team. And on that team, we have Miss Kim, who represents Social Services. We have Gary, who is a parent representative. We have Martha, who represents Court Service, Baron Health Department. Cassie, she is a service provider. Jennifer, the school system, the school system, Aisha Reed, a ten, and she's the chair and most of them. Resolution number zero eight dash two oh two one. Community Service Award Resolution honoring Sean O'Neil Collins Senior. Whereas Sean O'Neil Collins Senior has been recognized by Fluvana County's Community Plan Management Team. And this community for his selfless devotion to the welfare of the children and families of Fluvana County and beyond. Who detoured mentoring. And whereas Mr. Collins served the community through his work while being a vendor representative on Fluvana County's C P M T from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty. Recognizing the value of having rule based services available to Fluvana County community. And whereas Mr. Collins elaborated regulations closely with multiple public agencies and private providers in Fluvana County. To ensure children and families serve, receive and utilize the maximum levels of support for their success. And there is Mr. Collins has been an inspiration and guiding force for multiple mentoring agencies that currently work with Fluvana County children and families through the Children's Service Act children. And whereas Mr. Collins' spirit of service and personal investment in the community. Made Mr. Collins a true gift to Fluvana County's community and set Mr. Collins apart. Mr. Collins' commitment and dedication to the children and families far surpass the expectations of deep tour mentoring role and work of his family. Now therefore, we have resolved on this seventh day of April twenty twenty one. At the Fluvana County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize Sean O'Neil Collins Senior. For his many contributions to the county as seen through his community service civic responsibility and innovation. The foregoing resolution was duly adopted by Fluvana County Board of Supervisors. At a regular meeting of the board on the seventh day of April twenty twenty one. Thank you so much, Mr. Chris.
There is, yes, there is an actual motion to actually vote on the resolution. So let's say, oh, it's just neighbor, Mr. Mr. Mole was saying.
Would y'all like to add anything? I just tell you right now, sitting at the bus trap, he was always there waiting in the evenings, picking somebody up, taking somebody somewhere.
Yes.
And doing something for him.
Mr. Collins, one of the first people I met when I started my position back in twenty seventeen. He was a regular picture, a regular contact with my department. I would go by where I would put the phone and I would hear his calm, private voice saying, get more. And after the passing, I mean, the amount of communities. How 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 I would say. This antics that we heard was probably helped this family or tried to work to give to her charity. Was 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 very exciting. He leaves a huge, huge void in in this county, in our program and whoever is able to. Make a role, it's going to have some very big.
All righty. Miss Booker, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'm with the Board of Supervisors. And this family approved the Community Service Award Resolution honoring Sean O'Neil Collins Senior as president.
Motion's been made by Miss Booker and seconded by Mrs. Eager. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. We'll move forward with B, Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation. Rocky Reed, D S S.
Just before we go to the next slide, just let me know.
Okay. Good afternoon, Rocky Reed, I'm the CPS supervisor in the Department of Social Services. On the end, that belongs to my local campaign. April is the National Child Abuse Prevention Month, so I just wanted to give you all overview of Fluvana Social Services and being the CPS. The mission of Fluvana County Department of Social Services is to be a leader in the lack of other community agencies to serve county citizens promoting self reliance, well being and best possible quality of life. The mission is a community where individuals and families have access to support and protection, which will help independence and opportunities. So in Virginia for the same this year twenty twenty, there were. Over fifty two thousand five hundred fifty four children were reported as possible victims of abuse in the black in Virginia. Thirty three thousand eight hundred eighty of those reports actually were accepted to be investigated by Departments of Social Services. The sex abuse report of sexually exposed infants is one thousand two hundred ninety four and there's twenty five cases of human trafficking in Virginia. With COVID nineteen with child welfare, um, we did see a decline in the percentage of calls from educators due to students not being in school. But there was a slight increase in the number of cases from lawsuits. Also, in April twenty twenty, the Department of Labor declared child medical workers on the list of emergency responders. And as a lead toward response to COVID nineteen. But also included the link to the article in there. If anyone wants to read that article, it's very interesting because while a lot of people jobs just went to teleworking the child medical workers who still were small school, but went out. Doing home business face to face. Going to the hospitals, the jails or whatnot. So we never got a word in doing his job. So additional duties for CPS workers. We do family support cases, we do no the martyr cases for risk of children coming into care. There are monthly home visits that have to be done as many of that are state, also monthly meeting with service collapse. For in home service case, those are high, very high risk of case of the child being abused or being placed outside of the home. They're required at least monthly visits, service places meetings, um, monthly meetings as well. Another service is provided is outreach services. These are cases that are not valid, but we're able to give them resources such, um, we might have a case where a family said. That a family is not having a program without food in the house. They have food, but not appropriate. So we're able to tell them about food banks or have them to have a snack. We do mandated reporter training and should have long course each week. Through the schools. And we investigate in conjunction with law enforcement, the Department of Attorneys. Also CPS workers, we're on call when now this is ours and on how it is. We have mandated state safety measures, monthly reports. These are monitored by the Georgia Department of Social Services. So from the time that we get a report to our first contact. That for first time we document on the case, or third time it's open, it's all. On put into the system and is monitored by the state and we have monthly reports where we have to meet a. Certain percentage be able to say that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. Next slide. This is actually the February twenty twenty one, and I know it's hard to read. Monthly CPS performance and the state said on a. First time, time of the first contact of a victim, we should give me at least eighty eight percent of our victims. Within that timeframe, Fluvana is one hundred percent. We met one hundred percent of our victims in that time frame. And like I said, we also did that for on March. February. The state standard for closing cases on time is eighty five percent. Fluvana had a hundred percent of their cases closed on time. And we were only eight on social services out of our region that did that. And we didn't give them. Next slide. So let's talk about Fluvana County a little more. These are referral sources from the state this year twenty of twenty. You can see where most of our referrals come from law enforcement and then that is school. We have a lot of referrals that came from counselors and therapists, um, the hospitals, some people even self report. So, um, but we had a total of three hundred and eight reports during that time. Next slide. Of those reports, the type of abuse that was alleged, we had, um, one medical neglect. Mental abuse neglect, we had thirty seven family assessments and nine investigations. Mental abuse also includes domestic violence situations. I'm just wanting to mention that. And the physical abuse, we had thirty family assessments and four investigations. Physical neglect sixty one and an investigation is twenty three. Sexual abuse is always an investigation and we have fourteen of those. And you can see of those cases, how many of them were founded, which mean that it was proof that it happened. Next slide. This is the age group of the victims that we worked during this, that during that time frame. Most of them fall between the previous adolescence and forward to eleven year olds. But as you can see that they're in white range between. Under four years because they are not able to talk about abuse. Most of the time, those are physical things that we can see. But the large age group is the points we're not. Next slide. So reports child abuse, um, I have our phone number now, we have intake worker to take calls from business hours. After hours, we contact the sheriff's office and also the twenty four hour. Anybody have any questions?
I want to just put, I saw you had the mandated training for the sheriff's office, work union, school system and effort. Uh, the light academy also has got quite a few, I don't know if y'all are mandated to go there. That's the new school that's opened up.
Yeah, I can contact them next week once they do it.
I I just, I just was throwing that out there, so that's probably the other large group of students.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I always like to read yours, you have, what is it, in fact, is that a rational?
Yep, yes.
Yeah. It just, I always like to read, I always like to read that, and I hope people read that because it really does say. What you do.
Yeah, proclamation.
Yeah, that proclamation, I was like, they helped it. That proclamation, I don't know if it's printed anywhere else than here, I don't know if it's in the newspaper. I think it really explains your commitment and work itself. Hopefully we can communicate that proclamation over wire. Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Fluvana County Board of Supervisors, to thank the month of April twenty twenty one as celebrating Children's Month in Fluvana County and observation, child abuse prevention month.
You got a motion made by Miss Seager and seconded by Miss Booker, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. All righty. Next to C, Revolution for Transfer Fire Truck, Mr. Dahl.
Hello. Kent Store Fire has received a new fire truck. It was ordered as part of two thousand nineteen C I P. And actually they just received it. I have to take work for it today, so it's just come in. And that's a picture of the nineteen ninety two Spartan Hummer that that new vehicle is replacing. It is the general practice in Fluvana that surplus property is sold at auction. In the case of this vehicle, Carter'sville Volunteer Fire Department has asked that we bypass that auction and sell them the surplus vehicles. They have an emergent need in their community with limited resources to fill that need. While this is a variation on our normal practices, according to the Virginia Code. Fluvana can make gifts and donations of personal property to any firefighting services such as Carter'sville. The fair market value of the truck exceeds the purchase price, so the excess is considered a gift and a donation. I do want to make it clear though, that while this is a variation on our surplus policy, we're not changing our surplus policy. This is a one time. Alternative that we're doing for this community that has a need, we're not changing our policy.
And then again, there's some, there's some other language too, Carter'sville Volunteer Fire is also a nonprofit organization, so there's some consideration here from that standpoint.
How did we know that they needed?
They have been working with Chief Pullen for months.
Working with him?
Chief Pullen and Kent Store. For months, asking about this and trying to work out a way to do this. And it is on Chief Pullen's recommendation that we're doing this.
What is the value of this?
Finding a value for a used car is really difficult. Because they're all so different, you can't just look up on a used car website and see what's on our sold for. Because they're custom made, because they're custom done for individual units, it's difficult. I can tell you a few years ago, I sold a fire truck for Palmyra that sold over fifty thousand dollars doing it on auction. Now we could put this vehicle on auction and we could get ten thousand dollars for it or we could get, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars for it. We really have no way to know what the actual value of it is until we try to sell it.
Is this in the best interest of Fluvana County tax credits?
So Mr. Weaver, I can say this, you know, I think with with the uncertainty of. I think with with the uncertainty of it, of of what fire trucks are selling for right now, it's. I would say to get a, to get a known purchase price for this fire truck. You know, could could we maybe get a little bit more maybe, but we just don't know. We could get less too. And I think to have a a a known amount that we can get from this truck. I I think to help out a neighbor in Cali too, I think there's, a- as a nonprofit, I think there's, there's some benefit to that.
That's responsible, it's first of all to help help the citizens.
No, I I agree.
That's first and and then help the nation, so I agree.
And this, the price that is being paid will be enough to finish filling up all the fire trucks.
With a new truck. I'm just concerned about the way this was done. That's that's concerned, I'm not saying I'm not going to share with the concerns.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we, you know, we we talked to the board about this and 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 they were fine moving in this in this direction. Like I said, if 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 they weren't, we wanted to move in this direction. We've normally auctioned stuff off, you know, previously, and you know, we don't sell that many fire trucks, so we don't really have a good baseline. For what a fire truck goes for on an average basis, you know, Ms. Pollard, she looked through God deals to see what else sells out there. And again, this is just such a customized market, it it's hard to get a real, a real good idea of what something like this would go for. I think we are in the ballpark of 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 what is the fair market value of it, but it could be a little different. But you're already down with that. No, we really don't.
I actually reached out to a service provider of ours that uh, those services are our ambulances and some of our fire trucks and stuff like that. And asked them what they believe a fair price for this would be, and they couldn't even give me one. Um, there is just no way to put a value on a used vehicle like this because it's so customized. The value is what someone is willing to pay for.
And did we, did we base the thirty thousand on what we paid for it again?
No, that thirty thousand, that thirty thousand um, came out of discussions with Mr. Pullen and Carter'sville.
Okay. I'm saying the truck is twenty nine million.
Yes.
And what are the alternative to you for it out, like, we're going to auction, you get ten thousand.
Yeah.
And like I said, I could put it on auction, I could get ten thousand for it, I could get fifty thousand for it. You just don't know until it's done. Um, and in this case, you know, Mr. Pullen believes very strongly that Carter'sville has an emergent need, right, that they need this in their community.
Is the auction service not allowed to set them?
I I mean, they do. We can set a reserve. I tend to find that that things that have a reserve settle them. People that not bidding on as much. It's it's kind of a reverse psychology for a lot of people on on auction. So I I generally don't put reserves on auctions for that reason.
Yeah, I think we need to be careful in the in future that we handle these things. I'm not saying anything's wrong here. It just bothers me because we do represent the tax payers. And uh, they paid for this, and they should get their maximum price out of it. And I don't know what to say. Could be more, could be less. I suspect it would have been more if there had been a. Sort of effort to to get the word out, but I certainly don't know.
And I don't know either.
I can just tell you this, Mr. Weaver, my neighbor bought a ladder truck right about the same age, thirty nine one.
So that makes it all right.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, that's all what I even know of for the used fire truck being sold, but he. I run around Kent Store the other day. We we literally now have two ladder trucks in Kent Store, on private individuals.
I I don't have any problem really. It's just going outside the norm here, and and I think. He can raise questions when it's looked at for the public and certainly raises questions in my mind.
Well, well, again, and I came to the board with this because again, it is a little outside the norm for what we've done in the past. And and if we're looking comfortable going outside the norm, then we wouldn't have done this and we would have done auction like we're early. But but it's, there's nothing, you know, it it's it's legal above board. It just, you know, it's not the norm.
Challenging.
And I, you know, and I trust Chief Pullen that he is going to do, he's going to do the right thing. He has a great deal of knowledge. About fire truck situation, so. It's a good. I understand, Mr. Weaver, I'm not trying to. We all have our fingers.
Alright. Uh, having all that, uh, do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Supervisors approved resolution entitled a resolution to transfer. To Kent Store Spartan highest truck to Carter'sville Volunteer Fire Department. Transfer in surplus property used by Kent Store tire Carter'sville Volunteer Fire Department amount of thirty thousand.
Got a motion made by Mrs. Booker and seconded by Mrs. Seager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I will sit this out since I'm a member of company three, so it's four zero one.
Thank you.
Thank you. D, central absentee precinct location change, Ms. Pace.
Ms. Pace, we're going to go to the next slide and spell the word.
Good afternoon.
So everybody here that the registrar officers, the absentee and early voting precinct, twenty forty five days, prior to each election. So just to give you um. Get up on what happens in that process and we now move and relocate it to Lake Moncello. On Monday, prior to Election Day, the registrar and staff, we have to disassemble the voting equipment. And box up and secure all the unused and used ballots and all other elections made in town area. For transporting to the historic courthouse. Previously, because we were across the street, the election officer should just come along on Election Day morning at the traffic. And he was all transported across the street, so now it's good. Next slide. Now, uh, the cap, which is the central absentee precinct, those officers retrieve those items and transport them to the store courthouse. Where they have to set the courthouse um, stage or precinct, just like every other precinct we see when we go in to vote. Um, they reassemble the voting equipment and process the remaining ballots and ascertain the photos when those close, unlike that. Next slide. So upon completion of the stating of results and submitting that the results to the office, the registrar's office. The election officers have to disassemble the voting equipment and take down all the election paraphernalia and transport that. Paraphernalia back to the office. Next slide. Uh, when the registrar's office relocated away from the county seat and the historic courthouse, a disconnect in the flow of election operations occurred. Next slide. For example, communicating or communication with the election officers has become difficult. Reason being, the historic courthouse does not have phone access, nor is it technologically secure for what is required for the cap. And the registrar's office on Election Day. Transporting equipment, election equipment and ballots from the forty five days absentee and early voting is costly and manpower and man hours and it's not secure. Next slide. Um, the registrar's office and staff, we have to um, travel from Lake Moncello to the Palmyra Post Office. To pick up ballots, return it back to the registrar's office to input that uh, data into the state's. Uh, computer system, the data system, and then we travel back to the courthouse to deliver those ballots to the OEs. And return to the registrar's office during the course of the day on Election Day. Each trip is fourteen mile, mile trip. Also, those ballots delivered to the registrar's office, either by voters or those in the drop boxes on Election Day. Are required to be processed in our office before they're delivered to the cap, at the, which is at the historic courthouse at this moment. Next slide. Part of the central absentee precinct in the registrar's office on Election Day will reduce response time. Alleviate moving equipment and help maintain proper security, thus improving the overall efficiency during the election day process. Thank you, next question.
And again, this either way here, since we're moving, since we're proposing to move the central absentee absentee precinct. Um, it's an ordinance change and list in place of of the cap. So again, we're 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 asking the board to operate staff to advertise for a public hearing, which would be on May nineteenth. Which would be in plenty of time uh, prior to fifteen days, needed prior to the June eighth election, election.
I move the Board of Supervisors after our staff to advertise a public hearing. I don't know, it's still in chapter two, article two of section two thousand two, that would be. The national bank codes designate as the central absentee precinct to the office of the registrar. On my own, in the place of the store.
Motion been made by Mr. Ryan, seconded by Mrs. Seager. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. E, twenty twenty one strategic initiatives, Mr. Wong.
Yeah, I'll try to go through this. So again, you know, strategic initiatives, they'll, they were, they were built from remaining items from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen strategic initiatives. And one incorporates supervisors, concerns and and things that that the board brought up during the February tenth planning retreat work session. It also kind of incorporated some of the the citizen survey too, a little bit of 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 what the board heard. Again, it maintains, since this is kind of a short nine-month um. Strategic initiatives, it maintains the same categories as in previous years. So we just pulled up really quick, and like I said, I'll be happy to take take any changes from the board, but. Again, a lot of these right here, um, A one through A five, those were ongoing from previously, the new ones that. I think were A six and A seven, which is implemented annual county volunteer recognition ceremony and then access the need. Assess the need, but that's spelled wrong. Assess the need for professional fire chief position.
Have the Monish Gate, has anything been done there?
Uh, no, Monish Gate, no, that's still a discussion, you know, I know from VDOT's standpoint, they were going to look at. The Monish Gate after the roundabout was completed. Now that the roundabout's completed, there may be some further discussions on what happens.
They also talked about the roundabout that slowed everybody down, but it's a half a mile from the roundabout to the Monish Gate. And it's big, big speed now.
Can you pick up?
Yes, or even in driving distance.
Yeah. Um, you know, some, I know some of those have already been on, but some of them, to me, the wording um. Doesn't say that it's going to be done and when, like, for example, continue to research and evaluate. Uh, well, that's not, probably not a good one, but continue, um, perform strategically due of of existing needs, so forth. Um. Not a word, we started off so that. I know that it will be done, or unless you're going to have implementation scheduled somewhere. To say, when will we get this done, who will be pushing it forward, then it's just, to me, it is a good statement. But it doesn't. Help to say, it's not a, it's not complete.
So from, well, it's from speaking from a timeline, I mean, again, some of these, when when the board did this with Mr. Nichols in twenty uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. They gave me to do in twenty twenty, we had, there's a pretty robust list there of things that happened um, that that were on the list. So again, these are supposed to be done within, by the end of twenty twenty one is the goal. That's the goal and the timeline.
Year.
Well, well, now at this point, it's nine months since we're, you know, since we're, you know.
And I think, uh, the last was two years.
Well, yeah, they were generally, yes, they were generally two years. So so if you remember, um, twenty twenty, we had a lot of items that were outstanding. Covid kind of came and that kind of changed the whole goal, the whole goal line completely for what we're dealing with. Um, and so the board just kind of wanted to keep with with what we had outstanding previously for twenty twenty. So again, we came back to kind of come up with some, you know, some some finality on some of these things and try and get them across the line, to get them finished by the end of the year. Doesn't mean they're all going to get done, but that's, that's the push is is by the end of this calendar. And again, that's, you know, it it was always based upon the two-year cycle for when there was a a potential change or elections for more of them. And again, we would, in uh, in in January of twenty twenty two, calendar year twenty twenty two. We would come back to the board, do another work session and and determine what does that board want to do for the next two years.
Okay, talk to me about age group.
So yeah, so performance review of the existing need for partnerships. I mean, really, we have a lot of nonprofit groups. We have a lot of different of. Just partnerships that that we deal with on a, on a daily basis. I mean, so. I know, like, for instance, you know, Kelly, from the county standpoint, she sits in and she tries, she sits on the IAC meetings. There's lots of discussion that happens at IAC meetings that we pick up on from, I don't know, just things on. Whether it's, you know, coordination with 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 what, you know, the Blue Ridge Health District's doing. Uh, another example, um, the Arts Council contacted us the other day about about trying to implement it and do some other things. So so again, it's, it's looking at what organizations do we have and um, you know, just determining, you know. Do we need additional partnerships? What can we do to make certain things happen in a better way? Because from county staff, we don't have all the expertise on staff. There's other agencies that certainly have that.
And who's going to do that?
Who specifically?
Yeah. Is it anybody?
So I I would, I'm 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 going to point down there partially specifically. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, Kelly has a lot of coordination with some of our outside agencies, so.
Yeah. Because we talked about during the budget season, in the last couple of years, we have just kind of level funded them.
Yep.
And not really. Raised any, any.
Well, it was also, it was also discussed from the board during this last budget session too, and I know some other localities doing this. You know, get a committee to to really look at the budget requests and and, you know, put a little more due diligence in in what's there, so. I I I certainly, you know, we have a lot of great nonprofits and local agencies and and organizations that that support the county in in a lot of different ways. So so that's it under A one. Um, under, really under B, the only new item was create a frequently asked questions page on the county website. And this was kind of changed a little bit from, I'm having kind of like a, a almost, for lack of better words, a blog, a back and forth comment blog. Which it it is just not, it's not conducive for 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 our operation.
Well, we meet with pastors quarterly, uh, when we just do it, we have a weekend.
Well, again, that that was.
So that we got, we got shot down with Covid, can you know?
Well, and.
It slowed down anyway.
Yeah, I don't want to blame that one necessarily of Covid, because that one, I mean, again, B one and B two were there. From when, when, when the board adopted it in twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, so that one's been there for a while, so. I I mean, I would like to see maybe once things open up, maybe it is a quarterly or a, or a twice a year or something. But 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 understanding what are better and what are the best ways to get information out to the community that maybe is not connected electronically. Um, so so that's kind of. You know, the thought behind that. Um, under project management, everything is really the same. We have lots of outstanding projects. And and again, I think we just, we had a very robust project list before. Um, and really, the only one on here that is actually new is is C eight. Uh, it's, um, you know, long-term accessibility for water and sewer and CPAs, but really, we're kind of doing this with a lot of the other stuff. But again, this is kind of more big picture stuff. Um, under community development, economic development, tourism. Um, really, the three new ones that the board brought up were D seven, D eight, D nine, you know, implement stronger. You know, implement stronger code enforcement on the county spot light abating program. You know, we are starting to get complaints and, and, and citizen complaints coming forward. You know, the board talked about review of subdivision ordinance on cluster subdivisions. Um, and then certainly, you know, as we talked about zoning ordinance to look at higher density options between CPAs and our fours. So those were the three kind of new ones that were discussed. Otherwise, the other ones were kind of there. And under financial stewardship, really the, the one that is new is, and, you know, we've, we've kind of addressed this with the budget a little bit is somewhat plan for ways to adequately fund, implement it, standard, standard design, standardize a capital improvement plan, eliminating deferred CIP projects, you know, with, with this big debt issuance. That gets us moving forward, but we got to find a way to take that to the next level and kind of figure out how do we continue that? So it just doesn't get, you know, get back up in the order again. So. But those were the, the new ones. Everything else was, was there existing. A lot of these things are moving forward and, and we're really hoping that a, a, a big chunk of this strategic initiative, we can, we can check them off by the end of the calendar year, but there's certainly no guarantee.
No, I just, I just don't see, um, how you can address that if you don't have at least somebody responsible and that there's a reporting system that comes back that we can see where we're moving. Well, you know, we all put input and we know we're carrying things over and if we want to move forward, you know, you can't do it alone.
No, I mean, and so really, I mean, each of these kind of fall under a very kind of key, key area for the most part. So, so one internally, from, 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 you know, the staff standpoint, we are going to assign each one of these things to a staff member or a director that they have to look after these. Like, you know, strategic initiatives, Kelly's kind of led some of that piece. And she'll be coming back to report on, you know, where are we? So what we have here is just the big, here's the, the strategic initiative, but you know, moving forward, we're going to have, okay, who's the staff contact? And then kind of where are we? What's moving on with what's happening? So is there anything that the board just doesn't want down here, or is it, is it fine to approve that as is?
Anyone? All right. So we, we have to do a motion.
I'm going to go to supervisors, approve 2021 strategic initiatives.
Motion made on this Booker and seconded by Mr. Weaver. All in favor? Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passed by the. Next, we'll move forward with FY21 CARES Act budget transfer for CSA, Mr. Mole.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, uh, so we are requesting $6,500 to implement a service for our department of, of documents. Just to give you a brief overview of what it is, directly an online service that is provides us the capability to have documents on electronically. My department is, I, I obtain a lot of signatures. I obtain, I get them yearly from, um, our CPNT on a monthly basis. I get them from our cap team on a bi-weekly basis. And I get them from vendors, I get case managers, I get them from, from our county administrator. And that takes up a significant amount of time. But one, and so by doing it electronically, it provides the person that needs to sign the paperwork signatory the time or the convenience to sign, um, when it's best for that. Uh, also reduces a lot of downtime needed from mailing things or trying to arrange meetings to, you know, off interfacing people. So, yeah, so all those various things are listed there, the ones that DocuSign really helps address this. It's also fully compliant with all state and federal, uh, that regarding electronic signatures, including the Uniform Electronic Signatures Act, as well as being compliant with the federal, uh, separate, uh, hipper regulations. Our next slide. So when we're talking about, also, we want to be prepared funding is that unfortunately, it's very difficult for me to get certain signatures because there are certain agencies and vendors that will not meet with me because of their security restrictions that they propose on their own agencies. That really hampers productivity efficiency. Getting, um, payments to providers and getting services started for the children and these that we serve to our program. So I care to have money to help address that as well as address the potential other lockdowns that may happen for future, um, for future outbreaks or pandemics. Now, to highlight with this, I want to show you how we currently do things with three different, um, uh, with three different tasks as well, um, compared to how we do it now and how, um, projecting it would look with DocuSign. So first one is purchase of service orders. So before anything can start, the vendor has to sign this, uh, purchase order that allows us to, or that says the one who, um, paying you this amount of money for these amount of services. So when that happens, I generate the purchase order, um, you're, uh, one program I have. And then I take one or two business days to get signatures, look, that I free purchase order, I have to get three signatures. One from the case manager, that could be from one of four agencies, uh, one from the CPNT representative for that agency. If I'm lucky, I can get them at the same time. Forty percent of the time, I'm not so lucky. As well as fiscal officer. Sometimes that's me, sometimes it's our CPNT fiscal agent. Um, and so that's, there's, that's known meeting that I have to arrange, um, each, for each purchase order as well. Once that's done, I then have to mail the, then I mail the purchase order to the vendor. Before that though, I also have to copy the purchase order. I have to log the purchase order in three different systems as, as one is going out. And I have to file my copy of that purchase order. So it takes up a lot of man hours, even before it gets mailed out. Then when it gets mailed out, it can take three to fourteen business days to get to the vendor because we are totally dependent on the United States Postal Service, which prior to pandemic was fairly reliable, but, um, as pandemic has progressed, USPS unfortunately has not been quite as efficient as it could be or as productive as it could be. So I have had first orders take, um, up to 45 business days in some cases. Those are rare cases, but it has happened and causes a lot of stress between, um, my office and me. Now, with DocuSign however, uh, when I generate that purchase order, I upload that to DocuSign, um, at the next step. As soon as that's done, it goes out to the, um, goes out to the case manager who signed it. Then goes to CPNT representative who signs it. Then goes to the fiscal officer who signs it. And finally, to the vendor who signs it. Once the vendor signs it, I get a copy for myself. The best case scenario, I have to create a purchase order by 9:00 AM and have it all signed and ready to go by lunch. But we're busy people. We have busy lives, busy routines. So we're estimating, you know, we're facing our two business days. That's a vast difference from the 13 to 25 business days that we're, that we're looking at the current process. Plus, all those steps I have to do, get eliminated. I don't have to meet with people. I don't have to mail anything out. I don't have to prepare me. I literally upload it to DocuSign and that's it. So, um, so, um, then we'll get invoices. So when the purchase order just goes out, I also send out invoice forms that each month that they have to receive and send back to me. Uh, when I generate that, uh, I generate the same kinds of purchase order. But then I have to send, I have not to wait for the purchase order or for the invoice to go out. The invoice to come be mailed back. Then I have to set other meetings with these, uh, with my case managers and my CPNT representatives to get these signed. If I'm lucky, they have it at the same time. Forty percent of the time, they cannot. Then once that's done, then I can pay that, but it takes eight, 33 business days for that to happen. Some vendors can't wait that long for that month, that amount for that, um, payment to go out. Um, took us 400 hours, three years for me to do that. With DocuSign, same thing. Went at the end of the month, the vendor completes the invoice, gives me all the documentation I need for auditing purposes. Very, very much like a one stop for all those needs. Um, it's getting immediately sent to me. I look at it, approve it, order to the, uh, case manager, signed off on it. He gets back to me. Again, if they send to me by 8:00 AM, I could have it ready to go by.
Well, that's one. I mean, you, you get the idea. It's going to be a huge time-saving and a huge just benefit. Like I said, CSA is, is very paper intensive and, and they have to obtain a ton of signatures and a ton of coordination. And this is just a smarter way to do business for, for as much, as many documents that that goes to that department and all the different agencies. And, you know, and, and again, uh, Mr. Mole has been so nice enough to kind of be the, uh, the, uh, the test case for, for Fluvana as a whole. Kind of do this too, but for him, he's got a ton of documents and this would be, this be a, a, a big time saver.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and I mean, if we're looking, if we're looking at this, look about 575 hours of man hours. I would like, I could do a lot of free months. So, yeah, that'd be a huge time saver to save nothing of the amount of money saved from salary as well as postage and office supplies I have to use just to mail these things out.
If, if we're able to use care of language, yes, we can. No, 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 no. To, to, to be totally honest with you, like I said, if we can use care response right now, doesn't mean we can always use care response for this. I mean, there is.
Next year.
There is, there is an ongoing cost to this and it's going to probably be about five grand a year, five, 55 a year.
Between five and $6,000 a year.
A lot more costs is automatically savings to this.
Well, there, well, yes, Mr. Mr. O'Brien, Mr. O'Brien says yes. There is a huge, there's a huge savings from a manpower stand, standpoint. There's a savings from postage. There's a savings from, you know, if, if Mr. Muller has to get in the county vehicle, go drive somewhere and fuel, will meet someone. So yes, we're, we're allocating the cost differently. We're, we're actually able to get more work done than what, what we're doing.
All right. Are there any other questions? Should we have a motion?
Yes, I move that board supervisors approve budget transfer of $6,500 from the FY21 CARES Act contingency line through the FY21 CARES Act contact services line for the implementation of DocuSign.
Motion made by Ms. Seager and seconded by Ms. Booker. Are there any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thanks very much. Next is G, Kerry's Brook Elementary Roof CIP, Mr. Stripling and Mr. Hamster.
Yeah, I'll just give the board just a quick, a quick overview and then Mr. Stripling can chime in. This is a little different than how we normally do things, but so, so from the Kerry's Brook Roof Project, which was kind of a ongoing project for, for, for the Kerry's Brook School, and then it went to a roof project. Their project came under budget by 88,527. That was what was left of that project. Mr. Stripling is asking for that 88,527 to be transferred to a, to a new, different CIP project for Fluvana Middle School. Fluvana Middle School, I guess, over the administration office has, uh, has some leaks, has some issues, and then there's some issues with, with the windows and, and how the leads up to the windows. So, so that's the request. And Mr. Stripling, if you want to chime in and, and add to that, please.
Sure. Good evening, everyone, and thank you. Um, basically, we came in under budget, like Mr. Dahl said. And the money was there. So what we would like to do is we've been having an ongoing issue with the Fluvana Middle School, uh, quarter of the roof system that covers the administrative offices and guidance offices. And we would like to take those monies and construct and replace and repair the current roof system at Fluvana Middle School. So just switch from Kerry's Brook Elementary to Fluvana Middle School roof system.
Mr. Stripling, just one question. And it's just because I, I wasn't involved. When the middle school roof was done previously in, I guess, 14 or 15, this part, this part of the roof wasn't addressed?
No, sir, it was not. It was sectioned off and we did it in, in sections and this roof was not, this part of the roof was not addressed. So that's why it wasn't under warranty.
I'm going to guess this is the section that's over top of our main office?
Yes, sir.
That's the newest part, yeah.
Well, the newest part of the building, but not the new roof.
Yeah.
The, the roof was redone.
Yeah.
Trust me, when you go in there and they have trash bags covering up the computers sitting on the desk, it's not a good situation.
And, and this is already an existing CIP project that just hasn't been.
Yeah, the, the 88,527 was in an existing school.
No, I'm sorry. The, the, the request to fix the roof. I cherish.
No. No, no, this, this is not an existing project. It wasn't in the CIP. It wasn't asked for in CRM or anything like this. This is something, I guess, new that popped up.
Or is this.
How was it that we overestimated so much on this that we got back like 88,000 dollars? I'm just curious how we got that much back from the project.
You'll have to ask the schools when, when they requested the, the CIP amount for the estimate, when they guessed, when they put the bids out, they came under significantly. And that's, like I said, we don't necessarily, yeah. Mr. Stripling?
Sure. So, so we, we would like for it to be a more exact science and I would like to say that all of it is because we're good fiscal agents of uh, the monies. But when you're doing a project, obviously, I believe this was 750,000. Um, there are things during the process of construction that can be detrimental and positive. In this particular case, um, we were able to work with the contractor to come in under.
And, and, and normally from my standpoint, if they were asking for this for a new CIP project for something that wasn't fixing something that needs to be replaced, I would probably recommend, I would, I would not recommend it, but like I said, that's up to the board. But since this is, I mean, whether this goes back into fund balance and, and then they ask for this out of their CRM or they, or they use their existing funds. If we have a leaking roof, like it probably needs to be taken care of. And, and so this is not something that we're like, you want to build, I don't know. Build a brandy tennis court or something like that with, with leftover funds. This is something to keep our buildings in, in the shape of.
Okay, you want a motion on it? Yes, sir. I'm going to the board of supervisors, approve the transfer of 88,527 to Kerry's Brook Roof CIP to use on a new roof and window CIP project currently needed to Fluvana Middle School. Second? Motion's made by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. I can promise you, I will have some happy pauses.
Thank you very much.
I hate to say it that way, but I'm telling you, that, that we were literally, you would walk into the office if we were having a rainstorm and they were grabbing trash bags and literally covering every computer in the main office.
And could you put a pan under it or something?
You probably could, but I'd hate to be typing on a computer with the water going into it. Next up, it's presentation H, Economic Development and Tourism Advisory Council update. Mr. Ross Mel, lay it on me.
Uh, good afternoon, board. For, um, EdTech update, we'll have the chairman, uh, Mr. Andy Mel go through everything for you and all any, any commentary. Andy's got this on.
And, and Mr. Sora, when you want me to go to the next slide, just let me know.
Well, thanks, Eric. All right. Uh, good evening, everyone, um, and members of the board of supervisors. Uh, thank you for your time this evening. We are, uh, I'll briefly go over what the EdTech Economic Development and Tourism Advisory Council has been up to since the last time we checked in with you in October of, uh, last year. Um, next slide, please. As you can see, we've got about 12 members. And EdTAC, just for the, the public that's listening in, is a group that advises, assists, supports and advocates for sustainable economic development, development and tourism policies and programs and activities in Fluvana. Um, we also help maintain a, uh, county-wide perspective in support of a diversified economy for employment creation, higher paying jobs and expanded revenue base for local government services. So, um, as you can see, we've got about 12 members. We all currently have a vacancy on the chamber rep. We had a member who, um, unfortunately resigned from the chamber and so that position is open again. So, um, other than that, we are, uh, in, in pretty good shape. Next slide, please. So, uh, what we, uh, what we've done since October and starting in October, we, uh, with Brian's help, we did some photo competitions. Um, we did Fluvana, um, and you can see that picture of, um, I think that's near the dam at Lake Monticello, Brian. Um, that was, uh, Tom Smedley, um, that won that photo contest. And this is on social media and things like that. Again, ways that we can continue to, um, get Fluvana's name out there on social media and, and that type of thing. Then we had, um, about a month or so after that con, contest, we had a fall Fluvana pictures. And Jamie Kreitzer was the winner of that one. And, um, And, um, and that was something that was, uh, really helped get some, um, get some good, um, feedback on, uh, places in Fluvana. Next slide, please. We've also been doing the, um, with Brian's help, the, uh, buy from Fluvana campaign, which, um, is another way to um, better highlight the utilization of Fluvana County businesses. And, um, as Brian has said, this is sort of like a halo of highlight for a couple of days, um, to to focus on that particular business with, uh, um, with a blog post on the Fluvana website that, on the, um, Visit Fluvana website, I believe, as well as, uh, you know, social media boost and just, you know, a focus on that for, for several days. And I believe we've done a couple of businesses so far. Brian, can you remind me what the businesses are we've done so far?
Yeah, so just an event coming up, for example, um, there's going to be an event, uh, Spring Into the Village. I just wrote a short blog post about that. It's going to be on Sunday. Uh, we put it on our Visit Fluvana, um, Facebook page. We posted it for the next couple of days. It's been a really big help to take an event that might have gone out to a thousand people and get it in front of a thousand people per day. Um, and, you know, we're seeing good results from that, and it's just that it's an easy way for us to promote more businesses. Uh, one of my favorite examples is Plant Some Things on Union Mills. Uh, I, I drive by that on my way to work. I saw that they were in the opening, stopped, took a quick picture, and wrote a little blog post, posted it on Facebook. And that got shared fifteen times because, you know, Plant Some Things has been in Fluvana for so long, and everyone's like, oh, I'm so excited to see that they're reopening. You know, if you're not driving by Union Mills, you might not be aware that they just started their season. So, just some kind of simple ways to get people, um, to interact with this.
Thank you, Brian. And, um, on that same, um, on that same, uh, discussion topic, we also have the Fluvana three sixty-five campaign, which is not just business based, but, you know, a Fluvana picture or video, um, a day, each day in twenty twenty-one. So, uh, uh, Brian has an example right there. When the, uh, when that big cargo ship got stuck in the Suez Canal, uh, he, he made up a picture of what it looked like in comparison to the, uh, high school and so in Fluvana. So, you know, anything that, uh, we can do to continue to get Fluvana's name out on social media is, is a win for the county because, uh, we want to draw people here. And so that's, that's what this is, has been about. Um, and moving along, next slide, please. Um, we had a fairly active, um, uh, activity for Black History Month in February. Um, we had several, um, Black History facts throughout the month. We had some podcasts of influential African Americans from Fluvana. Um, two have been posted so far with Miss Armstrong, Bertha Armstrong, and Carmen Smith. Um, and I believe, uh, some others have been done with Miss Key, um, and Miss Carter. Those are not yet released, but, um, but those will be released soon. But we also had, um, a release of a, uh, the, um, African American family recipes from Fluvana. That was, uh, the brainchild of Nina Monroe and Brian Rothmull for, um, from the, uh, from the Ed Tech committee. And they really worked hard to pull this together, and I believe this year was a digital, um, 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 release of it, but perhaps next year can be an actual printed release. And, uh, this was, uh, this was, this was fun. This, you know, we got to actually have recipes from Fluvana that, um, African American families have historically used and, and used Fluvana things to make. And so that was really fun. Um, and again, that, that was something that, um, is something we can share with other folks in, uh, in the county and all throughout the county. So, that was a, a fun event. Um, moving on to the next slide, just what we're, what's coming up this, for this year. Um, I think we're getting to the, to the end of our tourism strategic plan timing period. So, I think that was through twenty eighteen through twenty twenty. So, um, we'll be giving some new thought to this year as to what that will be for the next couple of years. Um, but we've definitely been, um, working our way through the four main goals that we have for the, um, for the current plan, um, such as doing our, um, to tour some marketing strategies, doing, um, doing better branding, branding. Uh, Brian's been really great with that. Um, you know, we're certi- we have a certified visitor center now at the Welcome Center at Pleasant Grove. Um, you know, Brian was in the, um, Economic Development Authority, were really helpful in getting the signage up at Pleasant Grove. Um, and, you know, some things coming up this year, more, we could definitely work to improve wayfinding sign, signage, um, in, in Palmyra, or to Palmyra. Um, signs like the ones that went up at Pleasant Grove. Um, we want folks to understand where things are in Fluvana and that when you, uh, when you leave Lake Monticello or you leave Pleasant Grove, you can turn left, um, and, and come and visit other parts of the county, um, rather than going into Charlottesville all the time. Um, we're still working on the love sign. There's been, you know, holdups and that and trying to, to get that pulled together, um, in terms of uh, volunteer labor and all of those things, but it'll, we'll, we'll get that done, um, eventually. Um, you know, the biggest thing, though, is, you know, continuing to tell the complete Fluvana story is coming up with different and new ideas, uh, driving tours, uh, things that can, when people are in Fluvana, whether they're at an Airbnb or they're doing a, a visit to a family member in the county, or they're coming to an event at Pleasant Grove, the county fair, we want them to know that there's more things to do. You know, pop up your phone and do a driving tour of some historical sites. Um, do other things that, um, enjoy these three rivers that we have in Fluvana, the Hardware, the Ravanna, and the James. You know, there's lots of great opportunity to continue to gather tourism dollars for the county and, uh, and then also have folks that live in Fluvana spend more of their, um, their, their free and, their income, spend more of their dollars that they'd be spending at other places here in the county by letting them know about what's available and what's, um, what's, what's we're doing. Um, Brian has developed a really great, um, reboot of the Visit Fluvana webpage and his business directory and, um, key to a map, and just all kinds of great resources. And I do want to give a great shout out and to the great job that Brian's been doing. He's really helped the committee a lot, given us great guidance on, on projects that we can do, keeping a, a fire under us to make sure we get those things done and really just, um, you know, making sure we're using our best assets, which is our networks and our experience and our ability to, um, be residents of the county to our best advantage. Um, and so we're also looking to, you know, help out with the county fair this year. Um, you know, a, a good example of some of the recent discussions that we had at our last meeting was, there was a, um, somebody had brought up the comment that, oh, we could really use some more artisans or more, uh, vendors, artisan vendors for the, the, for the fair. And, uh, we had, um, um, Erica Mitchell from Sweetheart on the call, and she said, oh, I've got a list of sixty vendors. Let's, uh, uh, let's connect them with, uh, with the fair folks so that we can make sure that they're a part of this. So, you know, this, it's really about, um, working together with economic development, the Economic Development Office in the county with, with the E D A and also with, um, with our members. And that, um, I will, I will leave it. Uh, we don't, we're not asking for any money, uh, this time around. So, uh, that's always a pleasant thing to hear, I know, from a, from a board perspective. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I'm sure Brian can fill in some details that I may have left off if I, if I did.
Any, any questions?
I've got, uh, touring the county. Touring the county.
Well, probably our next big project that I would like to see, um, we have a little wins that I'm always trying to grab because it's always good to get those little wins. Probably our next big project will be a driving tour.
Yeah.
So that people can do that kind of at their leisure.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we can break that up. We can, there's, there's very cheap ways for us to do that and, uh, still do it very effectively and very professionally. So, um, that's, it's pretty much kind of the, that's next one I wish.
I, I'm currently trying to develop a, a short one for the shores, um, mountain hill community, um, for folks that might be out that way just because that's my wheelhouse and I know that area pretty well. Um, and, uh, I, I figured I might do a loud truck going by. Um, I figure I might do that for a, a little newsletter that, um, uh, F D L P classes, alumni classes working up, but, you know, that could be something that could be, you know, further expanded and tied to a map and, you know, tied into other, um, uh, driving tours within the county. But, you know, there's lots of great opportunities that we can get folk, keep, keep folks here in Fluvana and share with them our, uh, historic and cultural and natural resources.
It's funny you bring that up. Uh, today I was riding around with, uh, one of my kids in the behind the wheel school, and that's the route that I take. We go down by the Rosenwald School. And just make that loop back through there, and he was amazed. He's like, oh, my gosh, I had no idea this type of stuff existed in Fluvana County. And it was, it was just really cool to watch him get excited about seeing some of the things that we had.
Fluvana's got a lot to offer and, uh, we, you know, we might be a small county in terms of area wise, but, you know, there's that, that county that, we stretch from the James River all the way up to Zion's Cross Ridge, and there's a lot of neat things to see and to do.
Absolutely. Thank y'all so much for everything you guys are doing. We do appreciate it, and I've not forgotten about you, Mr. Sora. Football finally ended. I'll be calling you. Stop by one afternoon.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Families First Coronavirus Response Act extension, Miss Snow?
Yes. I remember back in January, we touched a little bit. So, we need to discuss and decide if the county should apply the optional F F C R A D, which is the eighty hours of COVID time. So, the Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one did extend and span, uh, the F F C R A in a number of different ways. First, it extended the deadline beyond March thirty-first as we anticipated. Um, it's now been extended to employers with less than five hundred employees. If the employers continue to decide to opt into the program, then it will be through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, any employer that does voluntary, voluntarily pay the paid leave benefit may continue to receive dollar for dollar tax credit for the FICA taxes on wages paid. But there's also a lot of unknowns and provisions that could forfeit that tax credit. Um, yeah, next slide, thank you. In addition, employers with less than five hundred employees should also be aware that there's also very substantial provisions that have also been expanded, um, which gives employees the right to have, um, additional sick leave and family leave. They would also not, they would also not only have the two weeks of sick time, the ten weeks will go up to twelve weeks. So, that would be a total of fourteen weeks of family leave. So, we, if we decide to reset the sick leave, it would actually go back up to eighty hours. It would not be what they have left over. It would totally reset, give employees eighty hours again of F F C R A sick leave. So, in addition, if they go out and leave, they would be up for fourteen weeks as opposed to ten.
And, you know, some of the, with some of this too, you know, it's, it's kind of a, it's, it's a little catchy, but, you know, employees to go out on this, there, there's not a whole lot of provisions that the county really can put in place that would limit someone going out on F F C R A. So, you know, to go out for up to fourteen weeks on the operation is, is somewhat, can be a somewhat of a hardship on the operation. Now, now, I, I, I see the flip side of that of maybe of saying, well, you know, the county's open and, you know, we're doing things and, and, you know, our employee's in jeopardy. I, the one thing I would say is, you know, the county's, the county has had the opportunity for all employees to be vaccinated. We've had multiple attempts for employees to be vaccinated. And so, you know, after looking at what some other localities are doing, looking at private sector, uh, private sector employees, you know, talk to Christine Hoffman, the Fred's office, a little bit as far as some of the, some of this, kind of the, the regulations with that. Um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's our, it's our thought that, that it would probably be not a good recommendation to continue this.
What would be the case? That they would have up to three and a half weeks? A week, right?
Yes. What's that?
I said, most of us have had the vaccine, who worked in the county?
Yes, we have, we have had, we have had numerous, numerous opportunities to get the vaccination. And so, like I said, you know, could, could you get it or maybe some different meeting forum comes out? You know, maybe so, I don't know. But again, I would almost rather deal with that on a onesie twosie basis than, than, than countywide.
I agree. I get it. Reaching out to other localities, everyone that I spoke with has not reset it, and, and no private sector that I spoke with.
And some jobs here, I bet, Lon, you need to have some magic to cover what you're doing. Or substitute, and you can't substitute for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, you, there are, I mean, you know, the, the, there are some, there are some, there are some, you know, there's some arguments to be had. You know, one, you know, one, one discussion was, well, you know, we were, we were kind of closed to the public before, but now we're open to the public. Well, you know, we had it in place prior. Well, that was really, there really wasn't an option before. It was, that was kind of a mandatory thing.
It was through March, right?
Correct. Well, it was really through December, the, the board approved to do it solely on the board's dime necessarily through March. Um, but again, through December, that was really a mandatory thing. We didn't really have to say whether or not we wanted to do it or not. It was, it was, it was just what, what we had to do. Now, this is, this is an optional, an optional do. So, again, we're not looking, well, again, if the board wanted to go something forward with this going against, you know, what, what our recommendation is, we would have to bring something forward to the board. But again, after speaking with the snow, myself, and just kind of talking some of the legal components of it, we're not recommending to, to continue it. No, you don't. It's just, just kind of giving you a heads up. It, it's something, it's, it's something that came out. It's, it's optional. And I wanted to give the board at least an opportunity to, 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 to hear it out and, and, you know, if, if the board disagrees with my recommendation, then, then that's fine, but.
One by one basis is probably.
Yeah.
Great story. All right. So, we can now move forward. Jay, the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one.
So, so, yeah, so, so the New American Rescue Response Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. So, again, one point nine trillion total stimulus package, three hundred and fifty billion with the states and local governments. The state portion of the funding is, of the funding is a hundred ninety-five billion. Um, one point two five billion, um, minimum was distributed equally among the fifty states. And then there's a formula for how it gets distributed throughout there. Kind of drilling down a little bit more. The local portion of the funding is a hundred and thirty billion. So, that is, that is equally divided between cities and counties. So, if you hear, see here for cities, they got sixty-five billion, but since we're not a city, we'll, we'll focus on for counties. Counties too also got sixty-five billion, and that's, uh, it, it's based on a county share of population. That's, that's how the number comes up for, for counties. So, when you're talking about Fluvana, Fluvana's estimated allocation is five, over five point three million dollars. Um, previously, the two amounts we got, I think we came up to four point seven, four point eight million dollars. Now, we have another allocation that's going to be coming to five point three million dollars. Um, the funds will actually come in two different kind of, uh, what they call tranches. You'll get, uh, one, one half of it sixty days after enactment, and then the second piece will be about a year later. Um, just kind of looking at some first, some restrictions on eligible, ineligible uses, or restrictions on, uh, uh, uses. Cannot be used to directly or indirectly offset tax reductions or delay of tax or tax increases. And, and some of this is kind of more so for, for, for larger state. Cannot be deposited to pension fund. And then funding available through and must be spent by the end of calendar year twenty twenty-four. So, December first, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So, we've got, what did I say? What's, it's about, you know, two and a half years. Two and a half years to, to go through these funds. And so, that's, that's, that's good, that's a good amount of time. So, looking at eligible uses, um, under A, and again, just like everything with this, there's still a lot of proof in the pudding in the details, which haven't been one hundred percent released, released yet. But again, A, response in the public. in the details, which haven't been 100% released yet. But again, A, response to the public health emergency with respect to the virus, again, helping negative economic impacts, assisting households, small businesses, nonprofits, you know, aid impacted industries, tourism, travel. Under B, a piece of it respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers of the state, territory, or tribal government that are performing such essential work. Under C, C talks about a reduction in revenue. You know, we, we can use this to offset a reduction in revenue, but, but there's very, and I could have Liz chime in on this. There's, she's been sitting in on some of these meetings more. There's some very specific information as far as how you have to compare what revenue you had.
This is one of the items we're still working out and that they have, all the various organizations have gone back to Treasury and asked, can you give us a very specific, because originally it was comparing it to 20, which is not really fair, to the FY21 budget, which is not really fair. It's most localities that already reduce their budget in the light of COVID. So there's been a request for a little more clarification. Can we go back to FY19? To really get a fair comparison of what with the reduction in revenue. So we're still waiting on clarification on exactly how can we determine how much revenue we lost.
Yeah. And, and honestly, from, from the county standpoint, I'm not sure that you would see a, a huge reduction in revenue if, if we even did.
We actually care better than the majority of counties, mostly because we don't have a lot of travel and tourism.
Yeah.
And a lot of the taxes that are affected by those, we don't have. So we did better than most.
And then, and then D, under eligible use, it says to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So, you know, I, I, I think with some of the discussions coming out, but you know, there's, there's, you know, some things we've done previously, if we have some of those businesses that are, that are, that are, you know, maybe still in dire need, you know, I'm, I'm curious, I'm curious a little bit about B, what, what some of the premium pay they talk about, really drilling down into the details on that. But we certainly know there are, are necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, broadband infrastructure for sure.
Can we, can we do our pockets building that we've started and didn't?
So, so that's, so that's a good point. You know, that's, and that's some of the things we're looking.
There have been questions asked about that. Several other localities have asked that same question and there, another item we're still waiting on a lot of clarification. I will say for this act, Treasury has come to all of the various agencies, the finance agencies and county agencies asking for, how can we do it better this time to avoid the problems? So they're really trying to smooth some of these questions out ahead of time. So we have better guidance. And as far as infrastructure, as far as the buildings that is a question that's been asked, it's also been asked about the water and sewer repairs. Several other localities have asked, can we use it to, do things similar to like the well repairs? We need to do, might be an option for those funds also.
So again, once we get more details, we're certain, we will certainly inform the board. Nothing I think that we can pull the trigger on right at this moment, although, you know, we'll, we'll have to see. I, I think in probably the next, you know, three months with, with some of this stuff, we may have some potential users. But like I said, we, we'll find out more of the details too. And like I said, we haven't even gotten notification that we're receiving the funds yet or, or when we're to receive the funds.
My question, D, can we reimburse ourselves for the infrastructure that we did? And I know we did it free COVID. But it was to do the broadband stuff when we gave the incentive to Firefly.
I don't know.
I don't know because that was earlier.
I don't think so because again, those were still federal funds. It's, if, if, if maybe we did it out of our own pockets, well.
We did pay them.
Oh, I see what you're, you're talking like CBAC.
Yeah, 375. Of course, that was beforehand.
Yeah, that's, that would be.
That's what we get for being ahead of time.
Yes. But, but again, maybe depending on what happened with Dominion and, and, and Firefly, maybe there's an opportunity for, for, for some reason that.
To recover it somewhere. And, and my question would be, I mean, it talks about B. Would that 5% that we're doing this year be considered in that?
No. Well, again, and, and this is where, again, this is where we really need some good, good guidance, better guidance than we received last time on clarity and what each one of these, what, what each one of these means.
And I will say there is a limit on how much each employee can receive for that premium pay.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's a, there's a, a limit per hour pay and a total, total amount that they can receive for it.
Yeah. So like I said, no, no action here tonight. Like I said, you know, I know I told the board we were getting 5.3. I just wanted to give you a little more, a tiny little bit more detail. Like I said, we still don't have a lot and there's more to come.
It's good through the December of 24?
December 31st, 2024.
Because it's all 24?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. So it's three and a half years now.
Yeah. So it's, it's a long period of time. And the schools also, they're getting their own.
I, I want to step to my head. It's close to $2.5 million.
Yeah, I think they're getting their own direct funds too.
Yes, sir. All right. Any other questions or anything? All right. Let's head towards the consent agenda. K, minutes of March 10th, 2021, Miss Leece. L, minutes of March 17th, 2021, Miss Leece. M, CRMF, FCPAS, Asphalt Repair Central Elementary, Mr. Stridman. N, FY21 Social Service Revenue Reduction Is Made. O, FY21 Social Service Additional Revenue Is Made. P, Approval of FY22 CSA Provider Agreement, Mr. Mole. Q, Council's Payable Reports for February of 2021, Mr. Guy. Anything we need to pull? No, we won't. Come on. All right. Do we have a motion?
Yep. Motion here on that. Ah, let's see. Yes, Mark now can't find it. We had the figures.
Oh, it's, I looked at it, it shuts. No, it's Q. Right bottom of Q.
Q. There you go. Very good. Okay. Mr. Chair, does anybody have any questions?
No, sir.
I'm going to be accountable and payroll. We ratified for February 2021. The amount of $2,146,753.25 and also that items A to Q.
No second? Motion made by Mr. Weaver. Seconded by Mr. Booker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes by a zero.
I will tell you while riding around today, the, the young man, he was totally awed by some of the things that I, we were able to look at and see. But then I also had looked at my book and said something about us paying out 2B and he went, what, what? Stank out his attention too. Number 10, Unfinished Business. R, FY21 Budget Discussion, Mr. Doll.
Yeah. So boring. Like I said, I, I don't know how much the board wants to get into the budget, but like I said, and I don't know if there's a lot of changes. So one, I can tell you from staff standpoint, we don't have any changes from our standpoint at this point. We don't have the additional revenue from the commissioner or anything like that. Nothing else came in. You don't have any changes in the budget. So, so the budget that the board advertised, and I'll just pull it up right now. And then if we, if we get into the nuts and bolts of it, I'll have this guy ever pull it up. But again, you know, the budget that was put out there was at a residential real estate tax rate of 88.4. Again, personal property, public utilities and machinery tools all stayed the same, going back to the budget balance sheet.
Well, I have one question. Somebody asked me and I left my budget book in saying, and I know there's reason for it. Non-departmental went way up. And I know that's because we moved other stuff into it, but I couldn't remember exactly what it was.
Yeah. So if you look in, actually, I, I've got to respond with someone about that too. So under non-departmental, remember last year, we had, we had a fairly big savings in non-departmental. It was only 84,000. Remember, we saw big savings in insurance of about 357,000. And then, you know, we've kind of got some standard, standard amounts that are in non-departmental. So it wasn't very big last year because we had big insurance savings. Well, this year in non-departmental, remember, we budget, we budget.
Payback.
Payback, if there's any health insurance increases. And again, we kind of have the standard non-departmental amount in there every single year of around 275 to 300,000, which is BOs contingency, personnel contingency.
That if it's insurance and raises.
Yeah. So some other thing. So again, that's kind of a standard amount. So that's really the biggest increases. We had big savings in 21 and, you know, two, two, 357 to the opposite. And now we have a little increase in insurance and then the, the, the staff pay plan wedge. And remember, this figure is not offset by the revenue we get elsewhere. So that's, that's why, you know, you're just comparing the expense to the expense.
All right. Thank you. I, I knew it. Good explanation.
So like I said, I mean, I, I don't know if the board wants to get into budget discussion. I just had them there because I didn't want to not have it available for discussion if the board wanted to discuss it.
I, I don't have anything. I mean.
Yeah. The only, the only one thing I think I want to bring up really quick and, and not in any big major fashion here. So one thing I did, you know.
That's the sheet you just gave us.
Yeah. Yeah. You'll have this sheet that shows kind of all the debt service falling off from the project. One thing I did just to provide a little clarity, when the, when the Savannah Review reported on, on, you know, the budget, they said there is 16.5 billion for a new county admin building, 16.5 billion. Well, that's not the amount. So, so going back to the STACE study and, and looking at the amounts and, and kind of plus them up a little bit. Really the allocation is more of this, it's about five and a half million for a new county admin building. It was about 7.3 million for a social services building. And then renovating the old admin building to combine it with the courts building was about 1.6 million. And then renovate the old DSS building to some various uses is about 2 million. So again, those amounts come up to the 16.5 billion, just, just for clarity for the public, that 16.5 covers a lot of, a lot of different functions and buildings. Like I said, those were, those were some estimates we got, you know, about two years ago. And, and we hope those are, you know, are still pretty current from the architects that we got. And again, you know, we had some other things in here. We put in for Abrams, Carries Brook, Park Chirac, you know, had some equipment, buses. So 25 million was the total. The one thing that I just want to just, just bring to the board's attention. So in my original budget, I had some items that, that I was funding out of cash. For instance, the secure salary part at 75,000, the heart monitor replacement at 100,000, school safety vest of fuel, that's at 125. And actually, the school safety vest of fuel, since they're applying for a grant, I think they only need 75 now. And then there was discussion about the middle school annex for bleachers and then school transport vehicles. So you have these amounts here. It's about a little over 500,000. That's not really included in this 25 million. But it doesn't mean that once we maybe get some more clarity on some costs of the stuff, that it could be included in there or offset with something. Again, you know, the board just said took 25 million and, and, and that's kind of the amount going forward and 25 billion would, would go a long way. And I think we could probably find some, some efficiencies and, and some cost savings in some of these efforts.
I'm disappointed we don't have a registrar.
Oh, no, no. So the, no, no, the registrar would go in the new admin building. Yeah. No, the registrar that, yeah. So in, in the new administration building, the way that, 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 that the architecture firm, when they came out to do the space utilization study, you know, you had, the registrar goes in there, everyone that's currently in the county administration building, the treasurer and the commissioner would go in the new administration building. I think, I think public works may or may not have gone in there. But again, we had a lot of kind of light function that, that we're going into. Yeah.
I think it's very good.
So again, there are some things that were not included in the budget, but it doesn't mean we can't squeeze it into the 25.
Yeah. Frankly, you have money that are coming in to the response app too. So.
Yes. Yeah. And, and I think you're correct. I think there are some things that are coming through and, and maybe there's some offsets in, in what we're doing. But again.
And that doesn't include the 2B that we're getting back from social services for the building.
No, and, and remember, that's going to be.
It's spread out over time, but still, there's money coming in. There's been money coming in.
Yeah.
When you take in that and you take in the 50,000 that we spend each year on the registrar's office.
Yep.
I mean, that's a, that's a hundred thousand bucks a year.
And that's, it's definitely, so, so again, I don't have anything, any new updates. That's the only thing I just wanted to bring to the board's attention. But budget wise, everything is, is, is status quo for our concern unless the board had anything they want to talk about.
And my only thing was what I talked about before. I'd love to sit down with schools or talk to schools about trying to redo that track at the middle school so that we could use that for the community.
Yeah.
So if we did that, I would definitely say we'd have to say, this needs to be open to the community. So that people from the community can be going there and walk or run or whatever.
So again, so, so nothing's changed, you know. So next week, we have the public hearing and, and, and I think because we have a pretty light meeting, we'll have some time if there's any changes or any further discussion after the public hearing. And then the week after that, we have budget adoption. So that, that's kind of the, the schedule at this point. One thing I was going to say with, is kind of getting off slightly off topic, but with, with it being a light meeting next week, you know, staff and the two redistricting committee members, Mr. Weaver and Mr. O'Brien, we met yesterday to discuss something, to discuss some scenarios. So I was wondering if the board would be fine if we had a little, maybe a little redistricting kind of discussions. So we can kind of show the board, the whole board, what we discussed last, yesterday with some proposals. I know planning department, they, they got some new software. So we're trying to figure out some numbers, you know, we already have some numbers for, you know, what things would, would potentially need to move. It just kind of gives the board as a whole a sneak preview.
Well, you know, the community is really interested in the redistricting. So would we be able to get that out to them? The agenda so that they would know.
We could have. We could have the agenda out tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh. Now I've heard some rumblings just through the grapevine, the state is going to say, since the numbers haven't come out, wait and do it next year. Has anybody heard anything that?
I, actually, when your selections is here.
Well, I understand.
I understand.
But they also are supposed to get stuff out to us and they have.
They're still saying September with data, the broad day will be maybe available on August. Whatever the Division of Legislative Services is doing, they're still saying September. I, I don't see how it's possible. I think they can't. They won't have it done.
So, so.
I don't want to stand. Now you could move on when.
We just don't have.
Yeah. Well, we've, we've, we've got, again, so, so, so budget wise, I, I think we're done with the budget here then. So we can. Yes, sir. Okay. Don't say that. So, yeah, again, if, if, if the board, I think it'd be better when we gave Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Weaver kind of a sneak preview of kind of what, what was being contemplated. You know, we had, we had just some ideas looking at where some numbers were going to be. And then I think if we can get planning to, they're getting their software, we might be able to get some better numbers as far as where some of the changes are occurring and some things that we have to change. So I would like to add maybe just an item of, of discussion at the next meeting on the 14th, if, if the board was interested.
Are you going to discuss some of it to save me?
Well, I, I wasn't planning on it because I don't necessarily know if we have enough of the information at this point. I mean, I.
We're going to, and we weren't going to.
Well, well, again, because we, we were hoping to get some more numbers. Well, well, again, because we, we were hoping to get some more numbers from, from, from planning staff.
I think the board needs to know where you are right now.
Well, I can usually, I can usually grow it up and show you.
If this one has three people weren't here, he's discussing.
Well, I mean, this is just preliminary. The big one will be, the big one will be the next time that we discuss.
Or, I mean, basically, we're going to be discussing the same thing twice, plus whatever.
We would never do that here.
No, I know. I don't think you're going to gain that much more between now and next week.
Right.
Just that, that it isn't worth just waiting till next week.
Exactly.
In my opinion.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, I, I thought we had settled that we were going to say something, but I really, except you all, you know, you changed your mind since Gladys talked about it, so if you want to change it now, you, you have that right there.
Well, no, I mean, w- w- because we had talked about, potentially talking with the board about it yesterday, but again, after, after we got back and trying to see what information we could really get in time. I mean, we could show the board exactly what we, what we, what we showed to you, but we were hoping to have a little bit more information. Um, and, and we just don't have that, that at this point, so it would be better if we.
What information do you not have?
Thank you. Again, there are some areas where we're looking at potentially making some changes. We, we need to kind of know the numbers of households that are in certain areas, so we have a better idea.
You don't have any out there?
No, we don't.
Yeah, I, I, I recommend that we wait until we have more information myself, because I just feel like it doesn't make sense to.
Okay, then maybe they'll be doing things over again, and it might have helped, and that's what I was thinking that.
And, 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 and this way.
Maybe some extra work.
And, and then this way too, Mr. Weaver, what we can do is, like I said, we, we didn't really have any of the redistricting discussion on here. We, we've got an agenda, we have a light agenda ready to go for next week. We can add that on there, and so some of the public sees it on there.
Can give them a chance if they want to, and if they can. All right. Okay. So that will go forward with the S, our local allocations for federal care of coronavirus relief fund.
So under the existing amount of funds, we don't have a lot of funds left.
Down pretty low.
It's down pretty low. I just had.
Yeah, what's allocated, really about thirty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, so we don't have a whole lot left from the first piece unless the board had anything they wanted to discuss.
We're not required to spend it down.
Yeah.
Well, if we don't.
Not by December.
We haven't told you since.
We haven't told December.
By December.
So, yeah.
Oh, we still got eight months.
Yep.
To figure out if there's anything we need.
And we're still buying B P supplies and those sorts of things.
You can come up with it right now, right?
I will be quiet. Maybe I will say something I shouldn't say. Uh, presentation, but anyway. All right, uh, so we'll move forward with any new business. Okay, seeing none, I will now go to open the second round of public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board, please state your name, address, keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct us to the board. Is there anyone wishes to speak at this time? Is there anyone, uh, if you want to speak, hit star six to unmute yourself. And hearing none, I will now close second round of public comment. Mr. Weaver, or Mr. O'Brien?
For certain provisions of section two dot two dot three seven oh six, section two long two thousand three seven one eight.
Question. Should we discuss what was on our monitor at the beginning of the meeting about the subdivisions and all that? Going to be included in any discussion in closed session?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, do I have a second? Got a motion made by Mr. O'Brien, second by Miss Booker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, we're now in closed session.
Aye.
Ms. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and now out of closed session, do I have a motion to adjourn?